All right, welcome everybody. Today is Thursday, May twenty second. It's now five oh four. I'm gonna announce that we start the audit committee. In the room, we have Kathy Breck and myself. Online, we have counselors Delarcle Bruce and counselor Tim Allen, as well as Potter, their young No. And with with that, I'm gonna throw it over to you, Mr. No.
Great, uh, thank you, um, Chairperson Delgado. Uh, I have two reports that I'd like to present to the audit committee. One being the annual audit plan for fiscal year twenty six, and the other, a performance audit at the Parks Department. So I'll start off with our FY twenty six annual audit plan. Hopefully, everyone sees my screen here.
Can you zoom in a little bit on that?
Sure. Is that better?
Uh, it's a little better.
Okay, so if I could zoom in a little more.
Right there, that's perfect right there.
Okay, so, um, I'll start off by saying, um, in accordance with, um, the city ordinance, we are required to put forth an annual audit plan every year. So what it does is it lays out the agenda, our agenda, for the upcoming fiscal year. So I'll turn to page two where I could talk about our resources. So there are three employees in our department, myself, Cecilia Goulet and Erica Wallace. Uh, they both do a great job, um, for the department. You know, our success wouldn't be possible without them. So, uh, as you can see in this, uh, chart, this is how, uh, we are allocating our time for the upcoming year. Fifty percent of our time is allocated, uh, for performance audits and other audit-related activities. Uh, thirty percent for training, admin and other, and twenty percent to administer, uh, the fraud hotline. Uh, then moving on to, um, down below, and we base our, um, audit plan on a risk assessment model. And when I say, uh, we develop a model where we consider, uh, certain risks associated with, um, every department and program. And we, you know, um, factor, um, the risks associated, uh, you know, which each auditable entity, and we come up with like a, a score, uh, in terms of, uh, which departments or programs score very high, uh, on our risks assessment profile. And those, uh, programs, departments, audities get chosen to be audited. So these are, um, what we consider, uh, risk factors, um, that we look at for, uh, every audity. Uh, as you can tell, financial exposure carries a lot of weight at twenty-five percent. And, um, down below, um, public impact being, being the lowest at seven percent. So with that said, I'll jump right into the audit plan. So for FY twenty-six, I'll start off with required or ongoing, uh, projects. So, uh, for the school department, we have student, student activities.
Could I, um, could I interrupt?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I'm driving, so I can't see the thing. So I'll be there in person in ten minutes or so. But I'm just, I'm wondering, what were the other choices besides financial impact? You chose that as your most important thing. What are the, what are the other categories?
So we have, uh, um, going back to, um, the risk factors, uh, internal control systems, cash nature of activities, complexity of operations, regulatory compliance, last time audited, and public impact. So those are, um, the risk factors that we consider when we look at, uh, a program or a potential audity.
Okay.
And that those, those are shown with, uh, different weights. So they, they go from twenty-five percent at the financial exposure to seven percent for public impact.
Right, so I'm just wondering, uh, what if I put reputation on there? Would that, is that covered in public impact or like if we did? If we had some indiscretion, sometimes the reputation of the city is as being a, you know, strong financial entity is, is taken severe, like when we had the problems with the golf courses. And, you know, do you, is that in public in, uh, in impact? Or is that something you agree with as a category?
Uh, that's factored into our public impact.
It is or it isn't?
It, it is.
Okay, all right.
So this is, this is all judgment, it's not, uh?
I, I know, I teach, I teach business ethics, that's the class I teach.
Okay.
So I'm well familiar with it's all judgment. I know it's not, that's why I'm just asking, that's a judgment that would be really important to me. Might be higher than seven percent, but I, I'm not, I don't wanna have that discussion right now. Thank you for answering my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll, I'll get back, uh, into, um, our, uh, annual audit plan, uh, on required or ongoing projects. Starting off with, uh, student activities, uh, is on, uh, our agenda. And, uh, we have a plan with the external auditors in that, uh, we audit student activities for two years, and they audit it for, um, a third year, uh, during a third year. So it's on a three-year rotating cycle. So FY twenty-six represents, uh, the year in which we, uh, take a look at student activities. Uh, so these student activities are, uh, student-run, um, activities, um, that partake in cash handling, distributing, um, funds from, uh, their cash collections. Um, so there's a lot of cash involved, a lot of risk involved, um, with some of these activities, because just the nature of cash, um, that's involved. Uh, and DESI, uh, which is, um, the state organization, requires that these, um, funds, student activity funds be audited every year. Then, uh, moving on, uh, we look at, on a quarterly basis, the city's, uh, investments, just to make sure that they're in compliance with, um, mass general laws. Uh, we're also required by city ordinance to ensure the external, uh, audit of the city's financial statement, uh, is performed annually. Then moving on to some follow-up reviews. As part of our process, we do follow-up reviews on previous audits to ensure, um, our recommendations that have been agreed to have been implemented. And the follow-up reviews that were slated to do, uh, in FY twenty-six include, um, the facilities division, the code department, and the parks and recreation division. Then moving on to performance audits, we're slated to do a cybersecurity review at Springfield Public Libraries. They have their own network, so we wanna assess the protocols, um, cybersecurity pro- protocols over at the libraries to ensure that the city's and the library's, um, operations, uh, is not at risk. Then, uh, we have a carryover from this fiscal year twenty-five audit plan, and that's the street maintenance performance audit. Then we are also scheduled to do streetlights repair and maintenance performance audit. Then we are, um, also, um, going to review the procurement, um, protocols at the Springfield Empowerment Zone. They are the partner, uh, with Springfield Public Schools and running certain schools in the district. So the objective there is to, uh, assess whether, um, the empowerment zone is complying with procurement laws. Um, next, uh, we will review the, uh, protocols for handling seized cash. These relate to when, um, there are drug arrests and there's drug monies involved. We wanna, um, reassess how those protocols, um, have, I guess, changed since the last time we had done that audit, uh, about seven years ago. Likewise, we're scheduled to do a review of, of the Springfield Police Department's investigative funds. Uh, those are, I guess, cash distributed to confidential informants, as part of the, uh, the police department's, um, investigative or, uh, drug unit. Um, staying with the police department, we are still, um, scheduled to review the evidence in the property room. Uh, they include, uh, I guess, anything from cash that's been, um, um, I guess, um, obtained from, uh, an ongoing investigation, uh, stolen bikes, dirt bikes. Uh, and, uh, that, that will be the first time that, uh, we will be doing this review, uh, at the police department. And, and lastly, we have four hundred hours, um, allotted for special request by city management, city council, or, um, anyone from the public. Any questions?
Uh, is this the, is this the full list here?
Yes.
So I, I do have a question. So these are expected to start for next fiscal year?
Yeah, FY twenty-six, yes.
And what's your, I know it's kinda hard to give time, but obviously each one of these have different timing, but what's your kind of idea of timeframe and when these will be separately reported on?
So, um, I give you, uh, so we were, we're going to start, um, with, um, the street maintenance, cuz, uh, that's, that audit will take, you know, um, it'll cover all four seasons, cuz, uh, there are, there are protocols during the summer, uh, the fall, and especially the winter, uh, in terms of treating, uh, treating the, um, uh, the roads, uh, for snow. So, uh, that, that we expect that to happen in the summer. Uh, streetlights, uh, we expect, uh, that to happen, um, sometime in December of FY twenty-four, of, uh, calendar year twenty-four. Uh, the empowerment zone, uh, probably, uh, in the summer, uh, late summer, uh, before, um, the school season starts. And the evidence room, uh, at the Springfield Police Department, uh, that'll probably happen sometime, uh, late fall, early winter.
So that's, that's when you will start these, correct?
Yeah, this is what we, what we plan on starting. It doesn't mean that, you know, uh, we're going to, you know, um, our schedules can change, and, and things could, uh, certain, um, uh, projects could emerge that's not on, uh, the, the audit plan.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was gonna be one of my, my next questions is, I know that you said some of these are kind of like on a rotating basis, follow-up, three years, two years. Um, but I know there've been a number of counselors in the past that have, you know, mentioned audits that they've wanted performed. Um, I know particularly, uh, Vice President, uh, Whitfield has, has mentioned, you know, certain things. So I guess, how do, you know, she's asked that before, you know, at the budget, and she's asked it before in another meetings, I guess, how do we? I guess, what's the process to get some of these into, into your list here?
So, um, uh, um, as I had, had mentioned, you know, we, we entertain, uh, every request, um, for, for an audit. Um, and, um, and we base it upon whether we could take on that audit on, um, how, how much of an impact it would have on, on the city. So based upon the risk factors that we, that I laid out, uh, in this, um, audit plan, if it scores high on, on the risk assessment, and it's, uh, something that could have an immediate impact on the city, we will take on that project or that request. Uh, but if it scores low in our, um, risk assessment model, then we'll put it off and, uh, reassess it during the annual audit plan for reconsideration.
Yeah, cuz I, I, um, cuz the, I like that you have the streetlights on there. Um, that's one that I've heard many of the counselors talk about throughout the last, you know, not, not just even when I've, since I've been on, but even before, and just wanting to pay attention. So I like that that's on there. Obviously, you have a number of things with the police on there. Um, the big one that we had a meeting before on the school busing contract. Um, I know we just had, you know, you just presented to us last year, but that's, that's a big contract there. It's a, you know, millions of dollars, and I wanna make sure that, like, we stay on that one.
Yes, um, I forgot to mention that, that is, uh, uh, on our schedule, uh, to be done, um, um, early summer. So, um, we have that, um, um, on our schedule for a follow-up review. We had done the initial review or, or audit in FY, um, this past fiscal year, and we pushed up the follow-up review, uh, to the summer. And we, uh, and, um, that is a priority item, uh, for us to do, and we will report back to you as soon as we are done with that follow-up review on the transportation contract.
Okay, and then there's some other things that I won't get into it now, uh, that I think, you know, because of the amount of, I mean, we're in budget season right now, so that's really what's on my mind, is how we're, you know, making sure that we're efficiently spending taxpayer dollars and making sure that we're doing everything to, uh, you know, make things efficient, cut out waste. And so there are a couple of other things that I won't get into now, but I definitely would like to talk to you about it in terms of future potential audits. Those are the questions for me. I, I know I saw counselor, uh, click Bruce's hand. I don't know if you still have a question.
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, no problem. Go, go ahead, Counsel Allen.
So sorry, I was in the car and then in between the car and here. Um, so, Young, um, the decisions as to what audits are done, and I, I heard Counsel Delgado talk about Counsel Whitfield's question and request and stuff. I'm kind of in that same space a little bit, like, the decisions as to what we're gonna audit. I heard you say you have, you know, criteria that you guys decide. Do you guys decide, or do you come back to us and say, here's what we, here's what our opinion is? What do you guys think? And so, so that, that's a, a piece that I'm, that I'm kinda interested in today. It's like when I asked you before about that percentage thing. It's, I, I kinda feel like the council needs to be a little more aware of some of this stuff. And that's not a criticism as much as just an adjustment maybe to how we go about this, so.
Right, so, um, uh, the way I read the ordinance is that, uh, the, the resources of the Office of Internal Audit, uh, is directed by, uh, the director. So, uh, the audit projects that, um, we propose to work on, uh, is dictated, uh, by me. Uh, and the way our process is that, you know, uh, you know, with that said, we have a, a process involved to evaluate, uh, audit projects that we take on, and, and it's by using a risk assessment, uh, model, which is, um, I guess, a, a standard protocol or, or a requirement by the audit, auditing standards that we follow. We follow the international, um, standards of internal auditing, and they say, uh, that audit departments that follow the standard should use a risk assessment model when, um, presenting an annual audit plan.
I, I think that's all fine. I, I have a hundred percent trust in you and how you go about your job. You're very professional and, and all that, you seem to do your job extremely well. My, my question, which I kinda, is kinda like Counsel Delgado's question. Before we do all that, or at the beginning of that, should there be a meeting where you sit down with the city council and say, "Our opinion is these are the next things we should do"? What is you guys' opinion? That's a simple step that I don't think we have. And it would address some of what I'm saying, some of what Counsel Whitfield has said, some of what Counsel Delgado has said, so that the plan you're presenting to us now may be terrific in your eyes, and maybe the perfect plan, but just we would know better if we had that step, where the council, the council, whenever this comes up, and I, I know you don't get as much press or as much time with us as, as you probably deserve. So it would mean another meeting, it would mean coming to, or a council, you know, just having a council committee of the whole or something or other, I don't know. And just saying, here's the things that are out there that we think are, meet the, the international standards. Do you guys have anything else that might not meet the international standards, but might be pretty critical from your point of view? That's, that sums up my kinda thought.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, to what he's saying and kind of what we're trying to say is, you know, we, we, we leave it to you to kinda come up with kind of the standards of what you're going based off of the risk assessment. But I think you've mentioned before, if there are other things that we are interested in that, you know, you could be open to it. So I guess that's what we're saying is, throughout this process, cuz I think we have to approve this plan, um, from what I understand. And so for me, it'd be, it'd be nice for us to have room to say, hey, if there's something that we've been hearing with last year, hey, auditor, can you add this, you know, one item or two items to your agenda? I think that's essentially what we're trying to say here.
Oh, yes, definitely. And, uh, I, I wanna point out that I did meet with, uh, Counsel Davila, uh, and I did attend a, a meeting, uh, with Davila and, uh, Counsel Babel Brown during the street, uh, regarding, uh, a meeting with Ever Source, and they expressed some concerns about streetlights, uh, and, uh, they had requested that, uh, I consider that, um, that particular, uh, subject matter to be on our annual audit plan, and, and that was considered. But I will, um, certainly, uh, make it more, um, I'll reach out more to the audit committee and city council before, uh, presenting the annual audit plan to get solicit ideas.
Yeah, I think that's kinda, especially like me being the chair of the audit committee, I should probably have this heads up before even gets to this point that you're adding certain stuff that's been requested. Um, I think that's only fair before we get to this point, so that I'm not just seeing it the day of.
Yep, fair enough. And I, I also wanna point out that, uh, when you do present, uh, the, uh, annual audit plan at city council, it has to be approved by city council.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they could make changes to it, uh, by, uh, vote. So if there's something, uh, on, uh, if there's some, uh, subject matter that the city council would like the Office of Internal Audit to include in the audit plan, they could put, uh, put it to a vote to amend the audit plan. Uh, and it would have to be, I guess, um, uh, would have a majority requirement to change the audit plan by city council.
Sounds good.
I think that, that's a good idea, want, but does a very structural answer, like we make the plan, then we present it, and then if somebody has a problem with it and we don't approve it. I'm talking about less structure and more, uh, human interaction on, on the plan. And so we don't, by the time we get the plan, nobody's gonna question it, cuz there's been enough in, interaction of, of you sitting down, rolling up your sleeves in this conference room and saying, here's the things I think are most important. I've been around the city a few years, and, and we, we're each in different, I've been dealing with code enforcement all day today because of a code enforcement issue. You know, we, we're on all different parts of the, uh, of the city government, and I, I think that's missing. I think that interaction between us and you, that you're our watchdog to make sure stuff is done well.
Correct, yes. Um, I will definitely make note, uh, to include this as, as part of our, uh, process going forward, is to reach out to the audit committee and city council well before we prepare the annual audit plan.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Anybody else, uh, Victor, I saw you come off of mute, uh, Counsel Davila, excuse me.
Uh, yes, I think it was chaired, uh, good afternoon to all. Uh, Auditor No, good to see you. Uh, please refresh my memory, I know we talked a little while ago, but with regards to the streetlights, uh, you did put that on the plan, cuz I don't, I don't see the whole plan here.
Oh, yeah, it is on our plan, so, uh, on this point.
And he mentioned it early on.
Yeah, that's right, okay. And, uh, can you refresh my, my memory with the timeline on that, if you could, please?
Um, as I, uh, uh, mentioned, uh, I plan on performing this, uh, audit in December of two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-five, you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-five, uh, okay, all right. Uh, thank you so much. And how many, um, I think you have like two thousand hours worth of, uh, auditing? I, I saw at the end, I think.
So, well, the total hours that we have, uh, for the department, uh, is about, uh, five thousand,
Five thousand.
Um, seventy, that's for three individuals.
Wow, that, uh, is that, is that the trend, or is that, that seems like a lot to be?
No, this is just, this is just the, uh, hours that, that we work in a given year. Not all of this, five thousand two hundred seventy is allocated for audits. You know, we have some of about sixteen hundred to administration training and other, and about a thousand, uh, to maintaining the fraud hotline and, and, and performing investigations on, um, fraud.
So that's about thirty-three point seven hours a week for audit purposes? Per person?
Maybe, yes. I mean, that's, it's a strictly a, a, a budgetary figure, I mean, it, it.
Got you. Okay, okay, uh, well, thank you, uh, Auditor. I look forward to seeing the results, especially the results of the, uh, of the streetlights.
So I think, so I think before, um, thank you, Counsel Davila. So I think before we move this along to the, uh, full city council, I, I, you know, I think I'd like a little more time to, to review this stuff, uh, the items here, and then maybe if we need another kind of quick meeting, just to prove, to then go to the council, uh, cuz we do have, uh, some meetings coming up in June, we have two, and then we have one in July, and I, I'm not sure if we have one in August, so. Uh, but you need to get this approved for the next fiscal year, correct, Mr. No?
Yes.
All right, so, um.
The, the, excuse me, the plan that we're working on now expires when? That June of twenty-five?
Yes, um, it's scheduled to expire, but, uh, um, we'll have some carryover, um, engagements that run into the next fiscal year.
Yeah, perfect.
As I mentioned, uh, one of them being the, um, transportation follow-up review will be, uh, an example of a carryover into FY twenty-six.
Is that school transportation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, all right.
So.
Quick.
Just, just for clarification through the chair, sorry about that. Um, I know we talked about, uh, Director No, uh, mentioned this as well. If we want to change something in the process now, would that be something, uh, we can present before, you know, get in place now before we present it to the full council? For example, that we, we just talked about is, uh, better communication, for lack of a better word, with, with the city council. Um, or with this, uh, with your audit committee, which, uh, Counsel Delgado is a part of. Uh, would that be a part of the sort of the negotiation? Uh, or, you know, are we gonna wait, wait to put that in?
I think that's part, part of what, at least I'm recommending is through this, through this committee, that we look at the, the, the items that are here as an audit committee, you know, make our suggestions, and then we have, then we approve it, send it to city council, and then city council also has that final. So I'm open to anybody's suggestions before you even get to the council.
Got you, understood, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. No.
All right, great. So, uh, I will, um, stop sharing this report and move on to the next report. So, um, the next report is the, the performance audit, um, at the Parks and Rec- Recreation Division. So, um, we have, I believe, uh, the Parks Department here, um, logged remotely, uh, Director Tom Ash. Um, so I wanna thank Tom Ash and his, um, staff for their cooperation, uh, during this audit. First, I wanna state why we did this audit. Uh, we did this audit because, uh, it was on our annual, uh, audit plan. Um, and with any audits, uh, our objective, you know, with the audit is to help departments improve operational efficiency. So I'll, so the first part of this meeting is gonna be, um, presenting items that are subject for open session. And, and there will be a second part of the meeting that will, they'll, they'll have items that will need to go into executive session. Um, and, um, Attorney, uh, Breck will guide us through, uh, that process. So with that said, uh, I wanna, uh, talk about the background for the Parks Department. Um, I don't know if the counselors, uh, know that the city of Springfield has the largest, um, by acreage, um, park system, um, in the area. So, um, we have over fifty parks with, um, with over twenty-five hundred acres. So Springfield ranks above Boston, uh, in terms of acreage, and more than Hartford, Western and, and Brockton. So, um, so that's a, a, I don't know if, uh, the counselors have, haven't, um, known about this. And here's the org chart for the Parks and Recreation Division. You have the Parks Commission.
We don't, we don't see anything at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I, I gotta share, screen. Uh, let's see. All right, so thank. Do you guys see the screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so, as I was mentioning, um, Springfield has the largest park system by acreage. So as I was mentioning, um Springfield has the largest park system by acreage uh in the area. Then I want to move on to um the organizational chart for the Parks um. Uh in Rec- Division, you have the Parks Commission overseeing the Executive Director. Then you have uh these divisions within uh the department. Uh you have the golf courses. Administration, Forestry, CY Arena, Maintenance, Recreation, and the Mayor's Clean City. Um so for um FY twenty uh FY twenty five. Uh the Parks Division has um approximately ninety one full-time staff members. Um they have a budgeted department revenues of two point nine million. Of which the golf courses make up uh two point uh one million, so the golf courses is. Largest piece of that revenue uh at the Parks and Recreation Division. Um for uh the uh FY twenty five budgeted expenditures, um. They have approximately twelve point nine million and the biggest piece of that. Operating um expenditures uh relates to maintenance uh at five point six million. I think that. That uh equates to about forty three percent. So the objectives of this audit uh was to assess the internal controls uh at the Parks um Department. Um our scope included fiscal year twenty four and a part of fiscal year twenty five. Just through November of twenty twenty four. Um moving on to a the notable, a notable accomplishment at the Parks Department, I want to call this out. Uh so in March two thousand twenty four, uh the Parks Department implemented a pointy sa- sales system specific to the golf industry. At its two golf courses, uh the pointy sale system uh made it easier for golfers to book and pay for ra- rounds online. And it marketed the city's golf courses to areas outside of the Springfield metro area. As a result, golf revenues in twenty, calendar year twenty twenty four increased by fourteen percent. Reaching approximately two point five million, so this is the highest recorded revenue uh on record. For the city, so it it's a um a a big milestone uh for the city of Springfield.
Awesome.
So with that, I I'll move on to uh the first finding that I I wanna uh present and that is. Uh finding two here. And now, okay, got a little too far, so um. So this has to do with um certain employees doing um having too many responsibilities. So we we noted um that at uh Recreation, Aquatics, and Tollbooths and banquet facilities. Um you have employees that handle cash. They generate bills, they receive payments, and they reconcile a daily cash receipts. So effective internal controls uh require that certain duties be segregated. Uh particularly those involving handling cash and the record keeping, record keeping function. So when you have these conflicting duties, you create an opportunity where an individual could. Uh appropriate or misappropriate assets and uh falsify records without anyone knowing that they had done so. So we're recommending that uh you know, for these employees that there there be another person involved in their process. In particular, uh those individuals um be uh I guess involved in the cash handling process. And um and those existing employees just handle the record keeping function. Um so this, I think that is uh would be a pretty simple fix uh to implement.
Can I ask a question on that? Yeah, um maybe this is a question for for uh Tom. Um is this just a matter of just like old kind of um standards there? Or is it like a a issue of not enough employees? Uh I guess I'm trying to understand.
I think it's, I think it's probably a combination of a couple of things. Number one is uh. I'm sorry. We could obviously use more employees in certain areas for sure, but I think the real answer to this. Is is trying to go to a cashless system, which we are now trying to implement, or just now. Uh in the process of getting fiber to uh to areas of the park, which we never had before, they dug the trenches and. Uh we're hearing that the uh the fire will be laid in the coming weeks, so once that happens. Like areas like Cedar Arena and Recreation Building and even the toll booths, we'd like to go to a cashless system, so. We're not again handling cash anymore and so that uh I think would be a fix to this to this issue that Young No. Has brought up and we talked about it and I think that would go a long way and and alleviate some of those concerns.
Alright, that's fair. Now I I didn't didn't realize you guys don't have some of the. That I guess the infrastructure built in to even go cashless, so that's, that makes sense there. I know this is, you know, we've had other audits where we've had kind of similar cash things, so it seems like we're starting to catch up. Um to that, um just interesting that we still have some places that have cash.
Yeah, also met with uh this week with um Bob Holson, who's kind of. Heading up the uh camera kind of system that we're gonna integrate. I know that uh. Young and and I and and our staff talked a- about the need for cameras in a lot of different areas. And so with the advent of fiber, we're gonna have really cameras everywhere. Uh so we went over kind of a of a mapping pattern of where we think they should be. And so uh it's in working with the CAFO to provide the funds for those cameras. Again, add another layer of of uh of security uh in a lot of different ways for the park, so we're uh. We're anxious to get that started as well.
Sounds good. Um I see Counselor Davila's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Auditor, a quick question. Uh I see, well, before I ask a question, uh in terms of uh cash. Are we uh are we looking to go cashless? Uh the uh front booth of Forest Park, is that something that hits in the works? Or to be able to play with it with uh? Either um debit card or Apple Pay or?
Uh I I think that's more of a question for um Director Ash.
Okay. Director, how how you doing, Director Ash? Good to see you.
Good to see you too. I think, like, to to go to a cashless system, the only, my only concern. About that, as as a concerns, as it relates to the control of the booth coming in. Is that not all of our residents participants have that, you know, some have cash. And so we want to allow people in because they don't have a debit card, for example, so. A little bit thoughtful on how we how we do that and uh. Uh it may be that that's not one hundred percent effective to uh. To make sure that every, all residents have access to the park, so we're kicking that around. Um and uh we we try a a hybrid kind of version of that and if we're finding. All the people do have, you know, a vast majority have debit cards, then we'll go to that. If we're finding that it's split, then again, I I'd be reticent to to put in a system that doesn't allow. Everybody to have access to the park who wants to come in.
No, absolutely. No, no, I think and I think that the best case scenario would be like you say, it's a sort of a hybrid. Uh option where you can choose how you want to pay. Uh whether it was uh cash or debit or Apple Pay. Uh but okay, thank you, uh Director Ash. Auditor, a follow-up question for you, sir. Uh I see that you have here as recommendations for the park departments. Uh I think you moved that, I think, uh where you talk about having different employees. Um basically have different be resp- uh short-term solution, have different employees be responsible for handling cash. From those who are responsible for the accounting. Um uh to me, when I first read that, I would love for some sort of explanation and or. Uh it will be that it will perhaps open up more room for mistakes, the more hands you have in the pot. The more mistakes you could make. As opposed to having a person being responsible.
Not necessarily. Um so uh a simple fix with this is um people who um. Um like pay for cash, uh well, you could have another employee um involved strictly with handling cash. Um when you have uh someone just strictly handling cash and separate, separate from the employee. Doing the record keep keeping, you re- remove that opportunity uh for misappropriation. Because uh when you have record keeping and handling cash, you, as I as I mentioned, you could also.
Okay.
And steal the uh steal the assets.
So the record keeper will will check the initial transaction, what can he?
So so they can alter the records to to hide that the asset has been stolen. So if you have a a separate person involved, it's harder to do that.
Okay, because that was my initial impression, the more hands you have, the, you know.
I would just cut on that counselor that uh as an example, in in Cedar Arena, we have a a manager. Who kind of oversees the whole operation and and would be the one, and is the one that that takes cash. And and keeps track of those things. And then and we and Young and I had, you know, conversations about that. Um so one of the concerns would be is is we we don't have an abundance of staff, we've got a couple of maintenance people and people. Tried to Zamboni and and things like that. Um so that. I- in my mind, u- utilizing those people to do that kind of work, when we have a manager. Who's, you know, function is to do that, you know, that I gotta, I gotta come to terms with all that. Um you know, but again, once we get to a cashless system, you know, I I think that kind of solves the problem anyway, so.
Alright, thank you. Uh thank you, Auditor. Thank you, Director Ash.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, so uh I'll move on to uh our next finding uh is um three A. Invoices uh are not generated in MUNIS and receipts are unreconciled, so. The city has a a an ordinance uh requiring that all uh city departments uh use. The city's centralized accounting system to post financial transactions, so. Uh they don't want people, uh departments to use disparate um accounting systems to generate invoices. Uh the, we noted the that there were uh specific um departments and programs within um the parks. That have um their own uh that have their own separate systems, like uh at banquet facilities, uh they use QuickBooks. Uh toll booths and aquatics, uh they use Word to um generate uh invoices. So the problem with that is that when you have desperate systems or separate systems that generate invoices. Uh management doesn't have visibility as to what invoices are out there and uh how many people owe the city money. Uh and um you know, you need that oversight to ensure that um these bills are being properly uh monitored. And also, you know, the that's why the city, the there's a city ordinance requiring that this information be centralized. Uh in order to uh for it to be properly monitored. And also it gives you uh an uh an oversight um of. You know, if someone someone is not paying uh their past due fees and perhaps um uh. That information could be communicated to other departments, saying that, you know, um they shouldn't receive services unless. Their past due bill is paid, so um and also many municipalities, you know, have a centralized system where they could uh capture this information. Um. Uh also, we noted uh for banquet facilities that, you know, they use QuickBooks uh and. Uh the information in QuickBooks uh differed from the information in MUNIS. So, you know, that could be a problem because uh not all the information in QuickBooks made its way into MUNIS. Um so it's important that if you do have a separate system, that they be reconciled. To ensure that uh the accuracy of both information, uh of both systems um could be um verified. And the differences could be uh accounted for. But uh our main recommendation with this is that. Move away from the separate systems and implement a MUNIS general billing. Um they already have it implemented uh at um CY Arena. Uh it's just a matter of rolling it out to banquet facilities, uh toll booths, and aquatics.
Just a quick note on that, um. We're not scheduled to get uh fiber down to that end of the park at the uh. Um banquet facilities, uh when and if we do, it's gonna, I think, make this a a transition easier. In the meantime. Um as as soon as we get that module for the MUNIS uh up and ready and we get training. Um from, I think, the Tom Schola's office, then that will assist uh as well. Um but right now, we're not, we're not there yet, so we do need help, we need training. And and at the end of the day, we we need this fiber to start uh supporting us in our efforts here.
Any any questions for anybody? Any counselors? No?
No, no question.
Alright, you can continue.
Alright, so moving on to uh finding um six A. And this has to do with fees at um. The parks. So uh certain park fees remain unchanged for years. Um so best practice. Suggest that departments, organizations review fees and update them periodically based on factors such as. Impact of uh of inflation and other cost increases. So the current fee structure for park entrance and recreational recreational activities such as field rentals. Such as field rentals have remained unchanged for over ten years, so. Uh park fees, entrance fees haven't changed for over ten years, so and um. Additionally, uh fees at the Carriage House, Emma's Place, King Phillips have not been updated since two thousand twenty one. And the uh fee for ICE rental at CY Arena has remained the same since two thousand fifteen. Also, uh um there should be an analysis done on these fees to see what. Other organization, if they're comparable to other communities and organizations. When we looked at other organ- organizations like Stanley Park, uh we noted that their fees or park entrance fees. Were a bit higher, uh along with uh some of their uh. You know, facility rentals like um pavilions uh were not necessarily comparable to the city of Springfield, so. We're recommending that the Parks Department do a cost or 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 fee analysis to see if the fees should be adjusted. And if so, um uh make the recommendation to adjust to the Parks Commission.
What was the, what was the finding that you had on the, on um, what, did you say Look Park? I I forgot what.
You said Stanley.
Stanley Park, sorry.
Stanley Park, and we also looked at Look Park as well. I mean, the fees weren't necessarily comparable, um and they're a bit higher. Uh at these other um organizations.
I mean.
Yes, sir.
So I think first of all, I, you know, I I think we really have to be mindful and thoughtful of. Of of the residents of the city and the affordability of 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 the park system, so. Again, I I don't want to put it in a system that's gonna uh keep people away or gonna restrict. Some people to to go and if we start comparing Look Park and and Stanley Park to to the city of Springfield, I think is a mistake. So regards, with regards to Cedar Arena, um we did a study. And we we had a park commission meeting today at three thirty, we implemented a change through the park commission to increase ICE time. Uh twenty five dollars per per for sixty minutes. So that's a little bit more in line with other uh rinks in the area, still a little bit lower. But is it more in line there? And we also increased our uh golf um. Uh charges uh this this year, so that has occurred in those areas I think are are. Used by people who more can afford it. Uh again, I I'd be hesitant to put an increase, as I know the mayor would be. To a resident city to use to use this park, so I'd be care, I'd be careful of of changing that.
Yeah, I I I agree with you on on that piece, uh Director Ash. Um I think it's, I mean, just mentioned in the beginning that we have. One of the largest park systems, and I mean, that's one of our assets and want to make sure that our residents can be able to continue to use it. Particularly Forest Park, so I would agree with you on that uh piece there. I see Counselor Davila's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. So I cannot echo those sentiments, I think uh that uh. I mean, I would, before we even go there, we're raising any any fees to go into the parks, I think we need to take hardcore look. Into other fees that could potentially be, one, be more profitable and two, be more practical. Um the park system uh is also totally beneficial for. Health-wise, but also mental health-wise, and so I would hate to do anything that will keep people away from the parks. But also, uh maybe this is for Director Ash, if that was the case, that's something that wouldn't come to us, I will be. Going to the Park Commission, correct?
Correct, which like, as I said, as an example. They improved the, raising the rates at Cedar Arena. So that, that was a discussion that I certainly had with Honor Know and so that was. All received.
Very well, very well. All right. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, you can continue.
All right. So moving on to the next finding, it has to do with fees as well. And this pertains to the contractual fees. Associated with the spirit of Springfield. So. Oh, we noted that the fees, contractual fees have not been updated since two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty. Related to the Spirit of Springfield contract. So we did an analysis of, of the cost associated with servicing this contract. And we noted that the cost bear, that the fees barely cover our operating costs strictly in terms of labor. And in fact, if you factor in the indirect costs such as the admin and. And some of the direct costs like fuel that we didn't consider and storage. I think we would be upside down with this particular contract with this spirit of Springfield. So our, our recommendation is. The parks department do a cost analysis to see if the fees justify, are justified in the contract. And if not, then, you know, for future contract proposed updating the fees and also consider incorporating an escalation clause. In the contract tied to an inflation index. For, for their consideration.
Thank you. This one's interesting when you bring this up because I know just yesterday at our budget meeting. Chris Signoli from DBW was also mentioned, Spirit of Springfield in terms of. Costs that we don't necessarily recuperate. I mean, Spirit Springfield is a gem in the city and they do a lot of programming. And a lot of things in the city. So, you know, obviously it's something that we want to continue working with them on. But I think, you know. Hearing this here and then hearing that now, I think, you know, whatever continued discussions with the law department and finance. Just to making sure that at, at minimum, we're not, we're not eating as much cost as, you know, that's not necessary. So. Yeah, sure.
So he, he was going over that at his budget meeting. It wasn't just Spirit of Springfield. It was. Event after event after event, the Ironman, the Pancake Breakfast, Chris rattled off like five or six events. That DPW has to do all, all kinds of things for. And he didn't complain about not getting paid for it. I didn't really pick that part up, but. And when you hear them all together, he's like, well, they have a lot of stuff to do to them. And now. You know, there's other considerations with. You know, trucks now block intersections. They used to have the horses block intersections and now they use trucks because of. We've all heard the national news about different people driving into situations. So. That may be worth looking at. I, I can't say anything specifically about Spirit of Springfield, other than that we know they do bright nights and other things. So.
We have no issue with the city taking a deeper dive into, to the contractual arrangement with that.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, then. Next, I'll staying on the theme of fees. We noted certain recreational fees are undisclosed. So the risk with that is that it's not a transparent process when someone's trying to book like a. A, a field rental and the risk that an inaccurate fee could be given to a customer or a potential risk for. Misappropriation. A higher fee could be charged and they pay with cash and, and the, the employee could take. The difference, pocket the difference and submit the correct cash over to parks. So. We're recommending that the fees be disclosed on the website. Uh, so that there's better transparency for consumers.
We took that recommendation seriously and we have since posted the fees and updated our website.
Listen, Director Ash is not messing around. He's. There, what? Not even a year yet. He's already, you know, updating. So kudos to you, your team.
They're a great team.
Awesome.
Great.
Is that it, Mr. Know?
No, I'll move on to the, uh, uh, next finding. And this has to do with fees again. Fees were inconsistent. Over at the banquet facility, the banquet facility has a website. And they have fees listed on their website, which didn't agree to the actual rates. Fees on the website were a bit higher. So again, recommendation there is just conforming the rates and, and just making sure that. The rates are monitored periodically on the website to make sure they're, they're accurate. Then if there are no questions, moving on to.
That, that also has been rectified.
Then moving on to the next finding, and this has to do with banquet facilities offering a discounted price for not, not-for-profits. I think that they pay like a hundred dollars less to rent facilities over at the carriage house. So this is, this may be. Contrary to mass general laws on anti aid. So Massachusetts, Massachusetts general laws prohibit the use of public funds to aid private entities. So what we're recommending here is that they reach out, the parks department reach out to the law department to see if this is an issue.
We've done that. We have referred that to the law department. And my hope is that. Obviously, we're going to follow the law and the recommendation by law department. My hope is though. That we still, we can't allow that because there are certain organizations that, that aren't as cash fluid as others and. Particularly nonprofits. So however, whatever the finding is by law department, we'll certainly follow.
Counselor Allen had a question on this one.
Yeah, I, I'm in a logistical bind here. I'm, it's, it's six. We usually keep these meetings to an hour or try to. And I'm representing the city council at a retirement party that started at five. So you are at two, Tom?
Well, I need you at minimum to go into executive session.
So if I, we move some stuff to another meeting and do the executive session because I'm. I was supposed to be out here at six, so I can go to the boil.
Yep, I, I, I certainly will, will. You know, recommend that. So we just want to move on to a few items on the executive session and, and conclude.
Yeah, if we, if we could do that, and then if we could do a follow-up to, to the rest of these.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so.
We need to log out of this session and log in.
Does everybody have the, the link for the executive session?
I believe I do.
I believe.
You have to do the motion though.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I just wanted to make sure before I log everybody out. So Counselor Allen, if you could do a motion to go into executive session. So. A motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices and strategies with respect. To such deployment pursuant to the meeting law, mass general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A four in connection with. A performance audit of the Parks and Recreation Department conducted by the city's Office of Internal Audit. Including certain critical security controls involving cash handling and security measures. The audit committee will not reconvene in open session following the conclusion of the executive session. So can I hear?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I get a second from anybody? From my counselors?
Who's the third member?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All right, everybody say aye.
The committee.
Motion by Counselor Tim Allen.
Seconded by.
Seconded by. All in favor, say aye. All right, we'll see you guys on the other link.